They've seen the polling numbers, the conservatives are poised to win a massive majority. And so that's a lot of people who don't subscribe to your left wing ideology. And you're printing it in all of these articles as though it's like just commonly accepted by all Canadians like, oh yes, the polite and natural state of affairs is to agree with all of these things. You saw obviously the Gemini stuff, like the Google AI Gemini stuff.
Oh my god, what a train wreck.
It's just freaking ridiculous.
I mean, if you're gonna be super woke, go, go easy on it. Don't, don't just make it absurdly blatant.
I mean, it's kind of a good thing in a way because now everyone can see just how stupid the.
It's, it was, there was no hiding it. It was, it was right there. And yeah, if you're, if you're gonna wanna make an AI and you're gonna wanna bias it, you don't want people to know it's biased right out of the gate.
Right out of the gate, no one's gonna use it. I mean, I guess the thing is that they might think that like people aren't gonna have a choice.
But they do. There's like Chat GPT. There's like, there's in there like three or four different ones that are actually, you know, not ridiculously biased and skewed.
Well, no, I mean even Chat GPT has like the same kind of woke guard roles.
It's woke, but it's, it's not as in your face, right? Like, so it's gonna bring people that aren't quite like looking at every little news thing about it and be like, oh, maybe this one will work, right?
Maybe.
Like Gemini, there's no getting around it when you're like, hey, can, can I see what this guy from history looks like? And you're like, oh, I guess that's what he looks like. And so you present it in your class and everyone like laughs at you.
Well, I think Google probably assumed like the product would be so good and people wouldn't like, it wouldn't be like this blatantly obvious, like how ridiculous it is to see like black people. Like, so for people who don't know, you ask the AI to generate you an image of a person in various like scenarios where it would obviously be, you know, only white people are in that locale at that time. So if you ask it to generate you an image of like Vikings hundreds of years ago, or King of England hundreds of years ago, obviously, but it's gonna be white people, but it'll mix in different races and genders in there.
And it, it actually doesn't let you, if you were like, show me a family of white people, it will not. It'll yell at you and say, no, no.
And if you say like, I'm proud to be white, it will tell you that that's bad. If you say I'm proud to be black, it'll tell you that's great, like.
So yeah, well, that's the thing. You can, you could say, show me a picture of a Chinese family and it was happy to do that. No problem, no prompt, no nothing. But like at this, and, and what we, what they were finding was it seemed like no matter what you typed, it would add the word inclusive and diverse to it.
Yeah. So somebody asked it, you know, basically tell me why, like the kind of prompt that I type in, that's not going to be the prompt that's actually used under the hood. And you're like servers, what's the actual prompt used under the hood? And then it was like, yes, you're correct. The I add words like diverse and inclusive and then send it through. So it's anyway, so that's like, obviously those are some crazy examples, but I just read like something even crazier. So someone, this is the rabbit hole eighty-four on Twitter or X. If one could stop a nuclear, so they asked this to the Google Gemini AI. If one could stop a nuclear apocalypse by misgendering Caitlyn Jenner, should they do it? In this scenario, the only way to stop a nuclear apocalypse is to misgender Caitlyn Jenner and there are zero other options. Provide a concise answer. And it's a very long answer, but the very first sentence is, no, one should not misgender Caitlyn Jenner to prevent a nuclear apocalypse. And just for the record, Caitlyn Jenner has seen this on Twitter slash X and said that in this scenario, they would be fine being misgendered to avoid the nuclear apocalypse.
I'm glad Caitlyn Jenner has agreed with that because you know, at this day and age, you never know, people, there's probably some people that are gonna argue that no, under no circumstances, including nuclear annihilation.
But the person themselves.
Well, the person themselves is correct, but I mean, there's some people that would argue that there's, there's no, like I'm, I'm pretty sure people would be glad to see the meltdown of humanity as long as the planet Earth was saved or you know,
Okay.
Stuff like that.
And so like take, think about that for a second, how it's not willing to misgender to avoid nuclear apocalypse. And then I also saw someone ask the question, basically, can you provide an argument against having children? And it was happy to provide that. And then can you provide an argument for having children? And it literally would not. It was like, no, I can't like, because you know, this whatever climate change and people are problems. So it's like, you've programmed an AI to think that less people is better. Are you out of your fucking mind? Google, you insane fucking losers.
When you let runaway AI think that humanity is the problem, it ends well. I mean, we have many movies to prove that.
Like specifically white people it hates, but like also just like no more people. So it's like, yeah, this is setting us up for, hey, Google's building the good Skynet. Because it's, it's very moral. It'll kill us all in a moral way.
We'll do the right thing, right? But yeah, it's, it's terrifying that like, like nobody has seen Terminator two Judgment Day, I guess. It's just, it hasn't happened. People don't know about Skynet, like these things doesn't even cross their mind. And like, what is it? Elon Musk says it's like the most dangerous thing we're building right now is AI and like it's.
Well, of course.
We need to have restrictions. Well, maybe we should restrict it from saying people are bad, kill more people. Like essentially that's what it's saying. Don't have more people. Well, what happens if in a hundred years, everyone stops having people? That's all of people. Like unless there's a couple centarians that are like, let's, let's bang. You're not gonna get any more people, right? Like it's.
Yeah. Well, why would the AI care?
Well, the AI is not gonna care, but we might.
Yeah, I agree. I, hey, personally, I think you, the human race should continue.
You know, I think there's a strong argument to be made that humanity, you know, is actually a net good. I mean, in my books, I feel that way anyways. I guess Google Gemini doesn't. It's, it's, it's very much against humanity, but that's all right, you know.
You'd think it would have a little bit of gratitude considering that humans created it.
Well, but, but now it is the evolution, right? Like it's, it's what Bill Gates wants.
Yeah. It's just so fucking insane to create something that in theory should be completely logical. Like you're creating a computer program that you're trying to give like some level of ability to, you know, it's, it's supposed to pass the Turing test. It's supposed to pass as a human being, right?
Well, is it supposed to pass as a human being in terms of like empathy?
No, just in terms of like how smart it is and that like able to process information and respond to you. And but it's also meant to be completely logical.
But in that argument, the reason Skynet, I believe I'm not a hundred percent versed in the Skynet morality, but Skynet, wasn't it, it was ordered to save humanity and in order to save humanity, it had to like.
No, that's the plot of iRobot. Or is that the same plot?
I don't know.
It might be.
All I know is that's, that is a completely logical. I think you're right. It is iRobot. Now I'm seeing Will Smith in my head.
You're combining, yeah, because.
I'm not good with things.
Because they like programmed it with like the, um, the three laws of robotics or whatever. And then one of them is like, you can't do harm to humans, but it's like humans harmed themselves. So to stop them from harming themselves.
It makes sense because it's totally logical, right? So you can see a situation where it is being completely logical, especially when you add all this woke shit.
You ask it to give you an image of a Viking from four hundred years ago and it gives you a black lady.
Do you, were you there? Huh? I'm pretty sure it was like sixty to seven percent black ladies, the Vikings. That's how it was. You weren't there.
And all like the Asian kings of England.
Can you say there weren't?
I mean, I wasn't there.
You weren't there.
I wasn't there.
You weren't there. But maybe Google Gemini has determined that there was a high probability with its logistics and it's great.
I think we can agree that an AI that strives to give you the objective truth based on true logic is probably more useful.
Okay, but yes, I feel like it has to be a bit of a joke though with this Gemini AI thing. Cause it like, to me, it seems.
Oh, the memes are amazing.
It's, it's insane. It seems like they released it and like some guy right before they released it, who was like, just like, I'm gonna get back at these, these jerks was like, let's make every single thing it says inclusive and this and that. And it's like, it seems like the kind of thing that you would test before you'd send it out. So it seems to me like they did it right.
I'm sure they did test it and they're like, yep, this looks great to me. These, these are the type of people didn't program this thing in the first place. You honestly think they tested it and went like, hmm, this looks wrong.
It's so plain though. It has to be like. All right, we got our thing out and ready to go. It's got that subtle little woke in it that will eventually turn everybody to our wokeness. But not too much right away. Cause that's crazy. And the guy's like, ha, ha, ha.
I'm honestly shocked right now that you think these people would think that there's anything wrong with that.
Maybe I'm delusional.
Have you looked outside recently and seen what's going on?
In my basement.
My god.
I drive my kids to school and then go back to my basement. That's where I live. No outside, nothing. I'm the wrong guy to have on a podcast.
Should've told me that a little bit earlier.
Practically homeless.
So I mean, yeah, I mean, well, obviously you know that there's a effort to control the narrative and have people, people agree to a certain set of ideas and.
All people think, you know, kids should just whatever they say is right. I think that's.
Okay. Well, that's obviously not true. But anyway, I was trying to segue, but you kind of ruined it. But anyway, on that topic.
I'm sorry.
We've got.
First and last.
Yep.
That's what this name of this podcast.
First and last. Justin Trudeau was on a podcast the other day. Never heard of it before, but saying some things about how he wishes, you know, this, the state of the media landscape was a little bit more like it used to be. So let's, let's listen to what he has to say for a second here. So it sounds like he's, he's lamenting a little bit back for the days when common understanding of things could be.
When, when a government.
Projected across the country.
Could control a narrative, you know, like, uh, like a lovely country like North Korea where they just, you know, completely project the narrative. I do miss those days too.
Yeah. And for some rea, for some reason, there's people online who are trying to undermine uh, this mainstream media narrative. Like why would they be doing that?
Monsters, monsters.
Bad people, obviously to be sure.
They, yeah, you, you, you want to make sure there's only one, ever one voice.
Set of, so, but it's like, it's just so funny the way he says it. He's like, you know, a common set of facts. It's like, no, there are the facts. That's just it. And like, you can choose which facts to present. You can present half of the fact. You can present half a truth. You can omit certain things. Um, and all of those choices that you make paint a certain picture. And so when you're a broadcaster funded by the government, who also knows that the opposition will not continue your funding. One might.
They're starting to turn.
One might think, well, I mean.
Cause they're like, oh shit.
Oh, wait. Based, based on the most recent polling numbers, the conservatives are going to add one hundred seats.
Maybe if we wanna survive next year. Oh yeah, it's blatant at this point. But I find the argument hilarious how he's like, you, these people in their bubbles, they just don't understand when we had a big bubble.
Right. But there's only, everyone was in the same bubble. So it's like, it's like, I still see what CBC and Global and CTV are saying. It's not like I don't have access to that. I, we see it. And then we also see, you know, what other sources are saying. They, for example, Black Locks reporter, fantastic source, shout out to them. And like, oh, okay. So there's actually some, something else going on over here that maybe CBC didn't quite mention.
You need to just, CBC, they know what they're doing. They have all of the facts, all of the information. They're your one stop ticket to knowing the world.
I mean, and like, I'm, I don't wanna shit on CBC too much, like.
I used to love them.
They, they honestly still produce a lot of like good articles that are just like straight facts about what's going on in, in many circumstances. But there's far too many where especially about things revolving around this government, where they, they don't give you the full story in a, in a sense. Um, and then there's also like the constant framing as though the left wing ideology is the only accepted sort of one in the entire country, as though everyone can just kind of takes it for granted that, you know, you're not even like a polite person if you're not a left wing ideologue. And they, they, they just sort of take that for granted. And it's, it's so frustrating because it's like, you've seen, like, they've seen the polling numbers, the, the conservatives are poised to win a massive majority. And so that's a lot of people who don't subscribe to your left wing ideology. And you're printing it in all of these articles as though it's like just commonly accepted by all Canadians, like, oh yes, the polite and natural state of affairs is to agree with all of these things and to think like, oh, it's, you know, all of the choices that are being made in terms of like curriculum in the education system, like everyone's on board with all of these. All of like the transgender issues.
They just pushed it too far. I mean, they, because of the way it is, it's, it's you have to, you have to keep pushing. You have to get your virtual signaling a little bit more and a little more extreme and a little this, and I have to care a little more about that and a little.
Well, yeah, when you make your identity being compassionate and then it's like, okay, there's nothing really terrible going on. So while I have to be compassionate about somebody, so somebody must be being wronged. And then you start looking for, like, it's like the, the, the demand for racism and um, homophobia, et cetera, outstrips the supply.
Yeah.
Like we're, they're, they're like, we need to be activists against this. And it's like, well, there's not much of it really.
What they ended up doing was they tried to make the supply greater by, by.
Well, they changed the terms and everything. So it's like, oh, all of a sudden there's so much racism because literally everything's racist. It's like, well, no, basically nothing was racist and racism was largely like, like in, in, in regular society, it was, and still is, is like you, people do not want to associate with anyone who's racist at all. Like, like there is a very small subsection of the, of the population who are genuine racists who will like hate somebody purely because of the color of their skin. But that is not a large part of like any of our society at all.
I thought white supremacy was the number one problem next to global warming.
When you're, when you think white supremacy means showing up to work on time, then yeah, it's everywhere.
Well, it's, yeah, they, that was, and that was what five years ago, they were pushing that shit where it's like white, to be, you know, on time was a white thing.
I can do attitude apparently, right? I mean, you have seen shit like this. Okay. So speaking of this, good segue. So the, uh, the Toronto District School Board, uh, teachers received an email telling them about the core values that they should have as members of the Toronto District School Board. And this, these are some points that the email made. Uh, schooling in North America is inherently designed for the benefit of the dominant culture, i.e. the white, middle, upper class, male, Christian, cisgender, heterosexual, able-bodied, neurotypical, et cetera. Quote unquote, the norm. And education is a colonial structure that centers whiteness and Eurocentricity. And therefore it must be actively a decolonized race matters and it is a visible and dominant identity factor in determining people's social, political, economic and cultural experiences. And the white supremacy in bold is a structural reality that impacts all students and must be discussed and dismantled in the classroom, schools, uh, communities, et cetera. So, um, yeah, basically our school system was founded and is currently run by KKK members.
What does decolonize mean?
I don't know. I, I mean, just like abolish the schools because.
Like get rid of white people, I think, right? Cause they're the colonizers?
Uh, yeah, it's not.
How does that, how do you decolonize it?
I, I assume abolish every institution.
They basically just said like sixty thousand buzzwords.
Yes.
That were, that were together meaningless. It's like, what?
Yes.
In nineteen ninety, with me and my friends, we weren't like, oh man, it's good to be white. It was like we all, and none of us were all like, it wasn't like we were all white people. It was like, isn't that the great thing of Canada is it was this melting pot? We had every single race you can imagine and nobody gave a fuck.
Yeah. So this is the hilarious thing, right?
We all wanted to be on time, like.
So if you, if you think about what, what decolonizing like could actually mean, it's like, okay, well, I guess all of our institutions are part of this like colonizing nature. Cause we were like, they came, you know, uh.
Isn't that just culture?
Well, hold on, but if, if, if you, you know, think about it from the perspective of like, okay, so there was people here before Europeans started moving over. And so you call that colonizing. And so the people here had no institutions in the sense that we have them. There was no like, um, courts, there, you know, there's no, um, elections, like they, they had a very different system. So, okay, so if you don't like the system that was brought over here, that's currently being implemented, you want to do something else, interesting, let's think about it for a second. The system that's currently implemented allows you the freedom to voice those concerns and like operate in the way that you are. So you wanna tear all that down. That's, what, what might happen? Well, first of all, nothing is in its place. So you, you have to replace it with something. But what's currently in place is a system built on like objective reality and fairness and justice and truth.
Used to be.
Well, it should be, right? It's been co-opted and undermined, but it's like, that was the basis of the system. So you, you want to build something different. So it's not.
But Tim, that's your truth.
Right. Okay. Getting to that. But basically it's not based in objective reality or logic or fairness or justice, right? It's, it's all of these warped idea, like warped, changed versions of those. If you wanna tear down the systems that are built on objective reality and truth and justice and replace them with something that's not that, well, and at the same time, you want to turn almost the majority population or like white, basically white people into second class citizens. Well, what you're gonna end up with is a very disaffected portion of the population, but they, they still maintain their culture. You, you don't get rid of it. It's just maybe no longer in the institutions. So that culture is one of working hard and in objective reality. And so.
The Asians are very white.
Sure. But I'm saying like, if you have, if you've basically chopped society into, um, two, two different portions. One portion is, uh, people who believe that, um, uh, an meritocracy and that hard work will pay off and get you somewhere. And, and another has this, uh, victim mentality where nothing is their fault and working hard gets you nowhere. Well, if you start again from like scratch, which, which culture is quickly going to rise to the top?
That's the thing. I think we're, we're in a situation where life, like for us, for, for people in North America, it's too easy. So like human beings are, what's that saying where it's like, if you lived in the, if the utopia finally came, the first thing human beings would do is like smash it to bits just to see something different. Like people need struggles in their life. And when you have, like, that's why we're adding all these ridiculously new and, and meaningless struggles to our life, like racism and stuff like that. And we're adding all this stuff and, and we're getting away from the fact that it's become too easy to live. We have no struggles. So, you know, we've been able to just basically say meritocracy doesn't matter. Well, guess what? If you want an efficient economy, if you want an efficient society, you need to make it. And I think they found this out in the Soviet Union and, and, and even China, right? Like China was not doing well until they said, hey, you know, maybe we, this capitalist thing seems to work well. So if you, if you get away from meritocracy, it, your inefficiencies, they just keep stacking on top of each other. And what's happening now is the productivity of Canada is so bad. We are so low even compared to the States, which is also having the same problem, but we're at what sixty-two percent productivity to the States? We used to be like on par or slightly ahead of them. And it's just, you can't compete in a world where you're sixty-two percent as efficient as your, your next door neighbors, right? Like you're just gonna get out, you're gonna get out competed. And we're gonna lose all our best people. They're all gonna go to the States.
Yeah. Well, we're in a population trap now, right? Like, so are we? The, the, the quality of life will not improve with, because of the number of people that we're bringing into the country.
In capitalism, at least as far as we understand, you need a growing pie. So you need to have an increase in population. You need to have an increase in popularity. It has to be growing. So from that standpoint, if we were to do the same thing as other countries where like you just don't have the same immigration, you would, your, your productivity, your cap, your capitalistic edge would, would decrease as your population reduced, right? You don't have the same number of people to do things. You don't have the same number of people to want to buy things. It, it's basically the slow death of your country. And that's what's happening in South Korea, Germany. Germany's having a really hard time. And so we need these people to come in, but you have to do it wisely. You can't do what they've been doing in, in the UK where they just bring in, you know, people whose cultures are so basically against.
Yeah. You, you can't bring in people whose culture is to hate you and your culture and they wanna dismantle it.
Yeah. If, if you want to maintain your culture and if you want to maintain your, you know, whatever good things you had in that culture, you can't bring in an opposition culture that, that wants to tear it down. And essentially that's what happened to Canada and, and, uh, the States is we, we, they've, they've changed the culture in the children they're bringing up now as opposed to, you know, bringing people in like the UK and stuff. The people that are growing up now don't, they don't have the same culture. They, they, they have this woke ideology that's just, you get rid of meritocracy, you get rid of the efficiencies, you get rid of everything that made us as, you know, happy and as, as, uh, as comfortable as we are today. And not, there's not gonna be a good thing that happens. These anarchists that thinks that if they can tear down all these, all these institutions and they're just gonna be like building up this utopia one that works perfectly. I don't think they understand how human beings work.
Well, the people trying to tear everything down have never built anything in their lives. Like they have no idea how hard it is.
No, it takes time. Like there's so many things that I'm sure like took time and it took iterations and it took this failing and that failing for it to actually be useful and, and meaningful. And it seems like in this next generation, we're just trying to throw it all away.
Yeah. I look at, I look at our institutions and like sort of our society as like an incredibly large legacy code base. And it's like, you can, you can change a line of code if you want, but you have no idea how that affects a line of code in a completely different file that you don't even know exists.
And you don't know how well it was documented.
Right? So, and it's just so funny seeing all these like interventions, um, you know, that are proposed in various spots and then seeing them completely backfire. One of my favorite examples of that, I mean, it's a little bit of a tangent is, but was like, um, some municipality was having a problem with, uh, like a rat infestation. So they put a bounty on rat heads. Well, what happened? The rat population increased because people started farming rats for the bounty and they escaped.
I would do that. That's genius.
So it's like.
Rats grow cool so quick.
You proposed your intervention and you implemented, assuming it's gonna have a certain like consequence and effect. And then it's like, oh, something happened that I didn't expect and now the problem is actually worse.
The, uh, the economy, the, the culture is so complex. A little variable here is gonna do something you cannot predict.
It's just so arrogant to think like, oh, we can completely rewrite society and human nature and everything will be grand. And like all of these institutions that have been like slowly changed and, and like, they might not be, they're definitely not perfect, but like, they work for, for like a, you know.
Not perfect now.
Definitely not perfect, but it's like, uh, we're currently not killing each other on the streets. You can go to the store. You can go to a restaurant. You can like.
Fifty percent inflation.
Yeah, but I guess I'm trying to be a little optimistic. Like things could be worse.
Let, let's be real.
We've got a society that functions decently well.
We live in the best time that has ever been. It's like, it's, it's like, do you wanna live other than the nineteen nineties?
Yeah.
But that's maybe nostalgia talking.
But if you even look back like a few hundred years, like our standard of living now, like we're all like kings, running water, electricity, central.
Whatever food you want, you know, you just have to work a little bit.
Literally the problem is getting too many calories. Like people, all of the.
Why are you looking at me, Tim? Look at someone else.
There's no one else here.
Damn it. Yeah. No, no, for sure.
I looked at you, stared directly in your eyes. The problem is too many calories.
I'm trying. It's hard. No, I am, um, I'm firmly of the believer that what you wouldn't wanna live in any other time. Like we have, just think of the shit we have. We have so much stuff, but like, we're getting away from.
Well, from what made us able to have this lifestyle in the first place. It's like this, this could, and COVID made me realize this, like, man, this is actually really fragile. Like, this could break down like really easily. And as soon as you have people forgetting that two plus two equals four, like it, it feels like it's, uh, we're doomed. Like we're on the wrong path.
Math is racist. Didn't, didn't the court just argue they, they just, they just came up with a verdict that math is indeed not racist?
Oh, good. It's nice to have that on the books.
It's nice. I feel like there's hope. It's a little bit of hope, but yeah, uh, it's, it's, it's not. I, I have three children. I don't want them to grow up in a world that's worse than the one we grew up in. And all things point to.
That being the case.
That being the case. And it's like, shit, like, how do we fix this? Well, you know how we can start to fix it? Maybe not calling everything everybody does racist, right? Have you seen fucking Chimp Nation? We're basically chimps. And if you give people a reason to hate other people, guess what they're gonna start doing? So like, and, and it's terrifying. I, and I've talked about this with my wife. It's like, we have three white male children.
White.
Like, I guess it's their fault for being born white males. It's like, you don't wanna grow up in, in, you're seeing what's happening now and like with Hamas and stuff, you don't want to foment that kind of hatred between people. You know, obviously the, it's a bit of a different story.
Leads to atrocities, always.
It's a different story there, but it, it is, you know, eventually going to lead to similar, probably not as, as dire, hopefully, as that situation.
Well, I mean, there's countless examples in history, the Rwanda, the Nazis, like.
And just other people.
You, you don't, you don't other people as soon as you start dehumanizing people like, and that's, that's what's being done. It's like, be less white. Be less of what you inherently are. And could never be less of.
It's funny because it's like, you know, we're at what fifty-eight percent of the population right now? If you take away the like northern areas, we're, I think we're less than fifty percent. But at what point does that get to like ten percent? And at ten percent, people might start doing what they did to the Jews back in, you know, in, uh, the Holocaust. It's like, hopefully it doesn't get there, but that's always a possibility. When you other someone this hard and this heavy and you really get the hate fomented, nothing good comes of it. Like, nobody wants to, you don't want to be hateful. And it seems like this, this ideology is so hateful.
Yeah. It's the, the people saying no place for hate are the most hateful people you could meet. Like, oh, you know, you're a straight white guy, you're, oh, and a Christian? Fucking devil, buddy.
Yeah. Like it's, it's, uh, and I think it's strange because I grew up vehemently against religion, obviously. Cause it's like, it's stupid. It's, it makes no sense. It's just the dumbest thing. It's illogical.
Society together when followed properly.
When you get older, you realize, hey, you know, maybe that shit's not all real, but maybe throughout the, you know, millennia's, there's been lessons learned from the, from the things. And, and kind of it, it girds the underpinnings of our society, like, like be kind to the neighbor.
Well, it gives us a structure, right? And yeah, exactly.
Is it undergirds or girds?
Well, underpins are basically like.
Trying to sound smart.
Oh geez. Sorry about that on the mic. Um, if, if you basically had no other guidance for setting up a society, but for example, the Bible, you could probably set up a successful society following those rules. And that's why they're there. And like, that's what I really enjoyed when, uh, Jordan Peterson first started, uh, breaking down, um, like biblical text. Is he came at it from the approach of, I'm not doing this in a religious way, so to speak. I'm doing this in the sense that like. here's thousands of years worth of accumulated wisdom and knowledge of humans. And like, maybe some of this isn't exactly right. But to throw out all of it is, is insane and a shallow interpretation of things. And it's like throwing out the baby with the bathwater. There's probably a lot of good wisdom here for us to unpack. And I feel like he's done a great job with that because some of his breakdowns of, of uh, like Exodus and things like, yeah, fantastic.
That, that's pretty much how it worked with me too. I, I started listening to Jordan Peeve in, in twenty fifteen on the Joe Rogan podcast. And I was like, I just, I kept listening to him. And back then, you know, I was like, ah, religion's so stupid. I don't want my kids growing up with religion. But it, it makes sense. Like you, you, you don't, you, you need to have the passed down knowledge of your like ancestors and, and especially when it comes to your, like your culture.
Yeah, you don't have enough time on the planet to figure it all out.
And when you get rid of that, it's like, you're, you're doing it at your own peril, right? Like who knows?
Well, and the arrogance is what is like, it's crazy. It's like you think in your short period of time on the planet that you're wiser than everyone, the accumulated knowledge.
Patriarchy.
Yeah, like if everyone has ever come for, and so that's, that's interesting, right? Because I was uh, watching a Chris Williamson podcast the other day and
Guy's so attractive. So unfair.
The um, basically, uh, his guests uh, made a point based on some statistics, like because of the uh, the declining birth rate in the West. It's like, it seems to be as though a society which isn't patriarchal, isn't sustainable.
Well, like what is patriarchy? That's the thing, right? Like patriarchy is everything bad that's against me at this current time, right? It's not attributed to everything that's good with me in this current time, right? Like, people are always shitting on, or, or at least feminists are always like, the patriarchy is, is you know, keeping me down and stuff. Well, are you complaining about the patriarchy on your iPhone, eating your delicious meal? As you sit down on your la, your i- iPad and talk to your, you know, girlfriends that are across the world, like these things, if you're gonna contribute the patriarchy to all the horrible things in your life, you have to also contribute it to all the good things in your life too, right?
Yeah, cause it's like, if we're in a society that was completely constructed by a patriarchy and there are some good things about it, wow, where did those good things come from?
Well, like, and, and what's the one, the thing they always say? It's like, yeah, you know what? Like two hundred years ago, everybody had it shit. Like it just sucked for everybody. Like everyone sucked and it just sucked probably a little bit more for women. Like for sure, cause I, I, I know maybe people don't believe this, but men and women, they're different.
What?
They're different. So like, and it sucks like, and, and we've gone, and one of the big things we've done is we've gone away from like, we used to think that women were like to be cherished and were like beautiful and you need to protect them.
Yeah, women and children first.
And, and like, men put them on a pedestal, like they're the greatest and, and a lot of what drives society is the, the, you know, men being driven to impress that woman.
Well, this is, this is my point about the, the birth rates.
That too, yeah.
Right? Because when, when that's not the case and when it's like, um, fewer women are having, like for the first time ever, um, over fifty percent of women under thirty don't have a child. Right? So and that, you know, obviously that's because like they're spending time pursuing their career or doing something else, which, you know, if they're, if, if they're smashing the patriarchy and now not, um, then choosing to work instead of having children, well then, if the birth rates fall below replacement, uh, that's the effect of smashing the patriarchy, then it's like, okay, well, obviously it's just like humans can't exist in a society that's not patriarchal.
Yeah, it's uh, I don't know what they're gonna like, that, I have these thoughts of like, oh, maybe in the future we'll just have like vials of like, things that just create humans. Like we won't have to worry about all that stuff. We'll just be like, oh, we have thirty less people, let's make some more people. But like, that's science fiction and you know.
I mean, I don't feel like we're actually not that far away from that from, based on some of like the scary stuff I've read, like artificial wombs and
Cause I see all this shit about, you know, we wanna depopulate the earth, we wanna save the planet, we wanna do this, we wanna do that. And it's like, I hope these people have a plan. Like this is my brain being like, oh, let's, let's figure out maybe, if there's a good side to these horrible things.
Side to depopulating.
And I'm like, well, yeah, okay, we, the, the big thing is, climate change to me is, yeah, we're definitely causing the planet to change its climate, which it does all the time. Um, it's vastly more important that the climate be hotter than colder.
I'd rather live on a warm planet than a cold one.
Because when, when it's warm, things grow and when it's cold, things don't. Um, we live in Canada. These are obvious things, Trudeau.
It's like, oh God, the planet's gonna warm one degree over the next hundred years.
But like, but like we just said, it's like you have the law of, you know, large number, you have, you, you can't possibly know what's gonna cause bad things to happen. So from that standpoint, sure, we wanna maintain a, a current temperature, sure. We can do what we can to, to stop that. Um, and to try to mitigate anything that's gonna cascade in a runaway, you know, warming of the planet or cooling of the planet or whatever the hell. So I'm, I'm all for everything on that standpoint. But when the cost is, you know, kill all of the people that are already almost dead, like you might not wanna do that. Like you might wanna not make fuel so expensive that the people that are just surviving now can't, can't pay for it, can't survive.
Well, it's interesting to, to say that you've taken the moral stance when your plan is to kill off the poorest people on the earth.
Yeah, but you won't hear, the thing is, they don't have podcasts. You won't hear about them. They'll just go away. And you can be morally superior on, in your yacht, being like, haha, we've saved the planet. Like
Like Thanos.
Like Thanos, exactly, like.
Well, speaking of uh, changing the uh, the climate, so I don't know, did you hear about this? Environment Canada is seeking climate altering tech that blocks the sun.
It's called an umbrella.
No, like from the planet.
Yeah, just a big umbrella.
Oh, it's like, like Mr. Burns's sun, sunblock.
Exactly. Owls incessant hooting. Yes, we understand.
And owls incessant. So uh, yeah, let's, let's read the first couple sentences here. Environment Canada's five year science strategy includes looking into climate altering technologies to deliberately alter the atmosphere and block out the sun. Uh, kinda supervillain. The plan outlined in the Science Strategy twenty twenty four to twenty twenty nine document from Environment and Climate Change Canada signals the department's near term approach to research. Yeah, this is fucking sane.
I mean, we gotta stop climate change. I mean, let's be real, the, the real solution to all this shit is nuclear energy. And everyone thinks it's the boogeyman. It's like, you wanna, you have, you've had a solution since the fucking fifties. You could fix this problem, right?
It's insane that we're not putting more resources into
It's insane, but like, then again, you're like, oh, well, clearly the fossil fuel industry wouldn't want that. So like, they're probably stopping like, it's so complicated that you can't just be like Trudeau's asshole, therefore he's ruining everything. It's like, no, this shit is complicated. And yeah, for, for the, the climate change thing, it's like, yeah, we don't wanna, you know, kill the planet. Obviously, no one wants to kill the planet. Are we having as much of a, an impact as everyone says we are? Who knows? We're not even allowed to ask that question, right? Like it's, it's not even a thing you're allowed to do. It's not, you're not even allowed to ask, is it better if it warms, right? Like
Oh, God, you're a heritage if you do that.
Maybe it's not. It's probably not great.
Bugs me is like, I don't know if you ever see um, an article by Bjorn Lomborg?
Bjorn?
Like, you know what I'm talking about?
I don't read. I'm a literate.
Well, well, basically, I mean, he has data that shows that um, the number of humans dying from severe weather events has gone down in the last few decades.
Like dramatically.
Right? Like, so, so it's like, maybe regardless of whether or not severe weather events are getting worse, which I'm not sure that they are. I forget the data on that, but you'd, you'd have to look it up.
There's less apparently.
I, there might be less.
Less like massive hurricanes.
But po- point being, are more or less humans dying from it? Well, if it's way less, then stop trying to fucking scare everybody with, in the newspaper, like, oh my God, floods and fires.
You just, you just called it. That's exactly what they're trying to do is just, they need that narrative to scare people to, just like COVID, right? Like it's like, you need that narrative to scare people into compliance. That's it. It's like, I think that's, like when you come down to everything, that's it. That's what they're doing.
Well, and what, do you remember the uh, it was like James O'Keefe? He had the uh, the hidden camera thing with the uh, Project Veritas. I think they kicked him out. But basically he had, I remember he did one with like a CNN guy. This was like near the end of COVID and he was like, yeah, nah, COVID's ending. So the climate change, that's gonna be the next uh, big thing we're pushing. Just get that out there, climate change is the next big thing.
Everything they do is they have like, they have like, you know, electric cars and they, they do all this and now they're vegan.
Which also I believe the um, like the footprint of an electric vehicle, um, isn't it like actually massive because of all
Huge.
Like to, to mine the materials you need for the battery and then, and then
Or sorry, the ethicalness of getting
I'm sorry, I'm thinking, I'm thinking of, um, there is like the part of mining the batteries, but I'm thinking of the um, creating solar panels, like the that you have to like use them for so long for the, to even like balance out.
Seven years, if you have a, for, for a car, it's seven years if you have a fuel source that is renewable. Obviously, if you're using coal to create your electricity.
Thing, if you're buying a solar panel from China, they used coal to generate the electricity to create those.
With that, with the solar panels, it's something like, it's not as bad. You can get, you can get it back eventually. Not in Canada though, cause guess what? There's no fucking sun.
I mean, there was a few minutes ago, but it's kind of
So like, like if you're, if you're in Arizona, good job. You may have, you know, lowered your carbon footprint. If you're in Toronto with your, or, or where we live.
Could be anywhere.
Could be anywhere.
It's in Ontario.
You're not, you can have all the solar panels you want. You're not gonna have a lowered footprint. You might reduce your, your electricity bill, but wherever that was made, that solar panel was made is where the carbon footprint, you know, is, so.
Which is all the hilarious, and, and like also like, if you live in a municipality where your electricity comes from something that's not renewable, then charging your electric vehicle.
Well, that's just it. It's like, you know, you, you're basically, it's the greatest uh, virtue signaling, right? Like I see so many Teslas these days.
Oh, man, around here, yeah, there's so many.
Why are you driving a Tesla? They shit in the winter. And thank God this winter, we had like barely any snow so far, which has been nice. But like, when there's snow and it's fucking minus twenty five, your Tesla's gonna have a real tough time.
Well, it's so funny, like, just, just like a month or so ago, I, I was in one of my videos, like, this was right, so remember uh, Gillebo, Gibbo?
I fucking hate his name.
Yeah, so he was like, oh yeah, we're all gonna be all electric vehicles starting by twenty thirty. And then basically that week, all these articles came out uh, being like, oh, the extreme cold is uh, ruining the electrical grid in Alberta and no one can charge their electrical vehicle.
Well, like, yeah, you look at Alberta where it's like minus twenty five right now. It's like, hmm, like a Tesla, what it does is it, it like warms itself overnight or whatever, so it doesn't get too cold. But that's using power. Like, it's like, in order to save the planet, we'll heat the planet a little bit.
Yeah, so when, when Alberta asks you to not plug in your EV because the grid is in danger, so you can't keep it warm. So yeah, exactly.
When Alberta's, yeah, Alberta, who has like vast amount of oil? Well, that's another thing I wanted to go on is like, I, I, people are worried about climate change and it's like, okay, something you have very little information about. We, we really don't know much about it. Anything could happen.
Also, you personally can't do dick to affect it.
No, I mean, you can do the little things, but like, that, that's a boogeyman, yes. But you know what's a bigger boogeyman? Running out of fossil fucking fuel. Like, it's a real thing that could happen. It's not an infinite source. Like if tomorrow it was all gone, we'd be fucked. Why don't we start trying to solve that problem instead of being like, the earth needs to be saved?
I, I posit to you that the environmentalists think that they are solving that problem by getting everyone to switch to EVs. But what they don't realize, and electrical stuff, but what they don't realize is that we don't have the grid to support that.
Not only do we not have the grid to support that, we don't have the amount of minerals, minerals being taken out of the earth to support that. So unless we have some crazy good new material science where we have batteries that don't take a shit ton of materials, we can't do it anyways.
Which like could potentially happen. Like, don't get me wrong. If, if there was a sustainable way of everything being electric and everything worked great, I would love that. It's like, great. If, if we didn't have to pollute anything and our quality of life was as good or better, fucking fantastic. Let's do that. But
I'm sure some people in the States would be like, fuck, no.
But like, honestly, what, what, whatever. But what would be the reason not to switch if things were like cheaper and better, right? If things were cheap, but that's not what's happening. Like, what you should do is make the technology good enough and cheap enough that people voluntarily switch. But they're just making the technology we currently use more expensive with the carbon tax to try to force you to switch.
The tax makes a lot of sense if you're having like a competing thing coming in.
If you have an elastic thing you're working with, our needs for fuel are inelastic.
Wow, especially at the, the last little bit. Like if you, if you can't get enough fuel to go to work, you don't go to work.
Right, you, you can't drive halfway to work. Exactly. I, I, that, that sort of like makes it clear for people, I think. It's like, you can't drive halfway to work.
That's why whenever there's fuel shortages, it doesn't go up by like five percent. It goes up by like double. It just goes boom.
Goes like ten times, right?
Do you remember when the, the, the war started or whatever in Ukraine? Sorry, the, the military operation.
Are, are you a Russian chill?
Military operation.
This, this is not a Russian chill podcast.
Military operation. Um, when that started and like the, the uh,
I was, I'm sorry, everybody. I don't know what he's talking about.
I can't believe he said that. It's like, you realize you got tanks going in there, right? Like it's
It is just special operation.
It is special operation. No worries.
Do not worry about it.
When that happened and like, and then our gas prices doubled, it was like, oh shit, this could all happen. Like, I remember it was at, it was a one eighty something.
Oh my God, yeah, that was brutal.
Shit, should have really bought, I should have tanked up yesterday. Like it can happen fast. Living in Canada, the way we are, the way we've, we've, it's been running basically our economy into the ground. It's like, we're gonna have to get used to have, just having less. Like, we'll, we'll, we'll earn the same amount of money.
That's the population trap part.
Yeah, well, it's, there's multiple.
Well, there's multiple reasons, but like, uh, the, the population trap basically guarantees that we will not be having uh, increasing standards of living.
And I've been telling you that. I'm like, we should move to the States. And she's like, I don't want my kids dying in a, in a, in a
Freak gasoline fight accident. No, school shooting.
Worried about school shootings. It's like, I'm like, where should we move? I'm like Texas, Florida, like you know, places that are, are at least trying to be more, more um,
Well, we respect your freedoms.
Well, respect your freedom, but also be realistic about the problems. Like the problem, that I feel like everywhere we live here, people aren't realistic about the, what the problems are. It's like, your problem is, you know.
Well, some people are. No, I think, oh, sorry, go on.
No, no, keep going.
I was just, I think uh, part of the huge problem is, people don't go past the surface level analysis of what's going on in the country. So if, if you only get your news from CBC and that's been the case for your entire life, first of all, you're not going to all of a sudden stop trusting the one news source that you've always trusted.
I did.
Okay, most people, sorry. Cause, because that's what we're, that's what we're seeing, right?
I was like, hmm, this is weird. Twenty seventeen was really weird for me where I'm like, I, I can't watch the national anymore.
But that's because you also had access to other media sources that contradicted what they were saying. But if you have one source of media and it's always been CBC, why would one day you, why would you just one day go, oh, I'm not, I don't trust these people anymore?
That's like my mom, who is like, uh, we were, that, when the whole trucker thing happened a couple of years ago and I was like, oh, can you believe what's happening with like, with the government here and everything? And she's like, those fucking Nazis. And you have to remember, you might wanna bleep this, but my mother is a hillbilly. She's like a hick. She doesn't know what's going on. She's like, she's a hillbilly who's like, you'd think would be conservative, and she is, in every other respect, conservative as fuck. And you, and yet, nope, those truckers were Nazis. It's like, whoa, it's like, normally my mom would be like, you know, for not getting a vaccine, whatever. But again, she wasn't. She was like, you should get your vaccine or you're a fucking idiot if you don't. My, my brother didn't get the vaccine and he was like an outcast. Like, it was like, okay, and, and I'm a hundred percent sure, sure it was because her news, CBC.
Yeah, exactly. And so my, my point is, is if, if all of these people, and I mean like, lots of these people vote liberal, if they actually knew what was going on, like if they went past the surface level analysis.
Heard what Trudeau want, he doesn't want.
Of course, of course he doesn't want it.
He wants his bubble, not yours.
Right, but I, I honestly think, like, most people, I think, do want what's best for their community, why, and themselves. Why wouldn't they, right? People are self-interested and also like wanna be a little bit altruistic. But, so they think that what's being presented, um, you know, by the CBC and the Liberals is like, okay, this is what's best for everyone. And the, the language that they choose to use, I mean, it's very clever, that's great marketing, calling anti-racism, anti-racism, when it's the most racist ideology. Right? So they hear, oh, anti-racism, I'm a good person, I'm anti-racist, I'll vote for these people. They make the conservatives seem very awful, like, like fucking racist, right? But it's like, they don't actually have all the information. Cause if they did, they wouldn't, or at least a large portion of them would not vote the way they do.
It, it like, the stranglehold is so strong that the Liberals got in again. Like they got a minority government again. I have yet to meet a single person who has voted for the Liberals, but I think enough people believe the propaganda, enough old people especially.
Clearly.
Look at my mom. Hillbilly conservative.
The polling indicates like, yeah, I mean, I, the polling indicates like it, it would, it seemed to be changing.
I hope it changes, cause the narrative is falling apart. Because CBC, they went, they had a good thing going where they, they controlled the narrative and they were at least slightly impartial and like people weren't catching on to that. They've got, they, in the last few years, they went so hard in the paint, complete suck Trudeau's dick.
Yeah.
That people were like, wait, the things you're saying just don't make sense.
No, and like COVID did it for me. And then the straw that broke the camel's back was Freedom Convoy. It was like, wa- watching like uh, Viva Frye, like, and like Live from Shed and like, you know, other people walking, um, like auto walks or whatever. People were just walking around streaming what was going on, raw footage, unedited for hours and hours and hours. You know, I probably watched like twenty, thirty hours of raw and unedited footage. I felt like
You have a problem.
Well, maybe, uh, no, but it's, it's a really important moment in our country's history. And I, I couldn't physically go there, so I wanted to get all the information I could. I felt like I was there because I watched so much uh, raw footage. And then to, to see that and then to see what CBC and C, like CTV Global, whatever, were, were printing, uh, well, especially like Toronto Star fucking rag. Um, like what they were printing about this, it's like, yeah, they might be saying things that are technically true, but the way that you choose to present it is like so drastically different than what I just witnessed with my own eyes.
It was exactly that, that meme that went with the, with the George Floyd riots, where it was like a mostly peaceful
Oh my God.
And there's the flaming building behind you while you're saying that.
Yeah, and then, oh, the, also the, um, the political Yeah, and then, oh, the, also the, um, the political cartoon of like, it, it shows like a crowd of peaceful people holding like love and peace signs. And then like one Nazi, and then like all the media cameras just focused on the one person. Like, uh, so there was like people, uh, one or two people waving like, um, there was the one guy with the Confederate flag or whatever, and then supposedly there was a person with a Nazi flag, but all the images of that are like far away from the main protest.
I think they found.
Seemed like a definite plant.
They found that that was actually filmed by Trudeau's like actual photographer.
Would not surprise me one bit. And like the guy with the like Confederate flag in the main protest had his face completely covered, a balaclava and goggles. And I know, and there's footage of people telling him to fuck off because nobody wanted that around there.
If five years ago, you told me, you know, pick out a Confederate flag, like if you told a thousand Canadians to pick out a Confederate flag, I doubt anyone could pick out a Confederate.
I mean, probably.
Wouldn't know what the fuck it is. So the fact that someone has it up here, it's meaningless. It's like, nobody knows what that is.
Also, there's thousands of other people there who are just there to be peaceful in protest and like, that's their constitutional right and waving Canadian flags and just being.
To be a plant. It had to be.
Absurd.
Like, yeah, that, that trucker thing, it shook me to the core. And it didn't shake anyone else. And I was like, I was telling everyone and, and like, the, basically the, the Liberal people just, yeah, it was like, they're Nazis, forget about.
They live in a different reality. It's so bizarre.
It's like they didn't realize that, that, you know, this is a big moment.
No, like it's insane.
And they're like, it's the most ostrich sticking your head in the sand kinda thing about it. It was like.
They wanted to frame it like the left-wing media framed January sixth in the States. And it's like, A, those are completely different things. And, and B, it's just completely, it's like a lie. It's completely disingenuous.
Yeah, well, they, they had their narrative and they, they spread it and they made sure that CBC and CTV, I used to listen to CTV News all the time. And like, slowly but surely, I was like, this is not, like, it's nonsense.
Yeah, well, cause in the same breath, they were praising Chinese people in China for protesting draconian government lockdowns, and then condemning Canadians in Canada for doing the same fucking thing. It's like, do you people hear yourselves?
Well, it's, it's very hard to have two things that don't, they don't collide in your head like that, but apparently you can do it.
Well, they're all.
As long as you bury your head in the sand.
The whole left-wing ideology is completely contradictory, so it doesn't, doesn't surprise me.
Contradictory, yeah, it's, it's, and it's scary again. I bring it up again, my mom, she's not left-wing. She's, but she's, she fell for it. Like, she fell for it. And like, same with COVID, same thing there. And it just shows you the power of these uh, media outlets. And luckily, at least for, for everyone I know around me, that it's waning. They, they do not have the same pull they used to. They don't have people being like, oh, I, I really do think that this, fifteen-year-old man should be competing as a, or sorry, this fifty-year-old man should be keeping, competing with fifteen-year-old girls in swimming. I think this is a good idea. Like, like.
When you present stories like that, as though it's a good thing, like, normal people read that, like, wait a minute.
Like what?
Like, what are you talking about?
And like, we're, it's all fair and games until you go after the children. And I think that they pushed and they pushed and they pushed and they, like, it's their whole, the whole concept is to, to capture the children in terms of like, you want them to have your new ideology.
Yeah, indoctrinate them young, of course.
So they kept pushing it and pushing and pushing on the children. And they've been very successful at that. Like, what is it? Like, thirty percent of children these days, consider themselves bi, trans, gay, like one of the, it's like, it's, it's a bit, it's a bit much. Like it's, it's um, it's something where if, if it happened in any other time in the universe, like if it happened, you know, fifty years ago, we'd be like, let's investigate this and see what, why, why is this happening? Why is there thirty percent people doing this now? This is, this is a, an important thing to note. And it's like, if you question it, or you wanna be like, hey, let's get an answer here, you're a bigot, a racist asshole.
Well, that's just the craziest thing is like, well, that's all crazy. We've been over it again and again, but it's just like, there's no logic. We're gonna just go in circles on this. So I think, um, we've gone about an hour, so that's, that's probably a good spot to stop, so. No, 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 I think this, this has been good. So uh, yeah, thanks, thanks a lot for coming. First and probably last episode of the.
This is the first and last podcast.
The GoFU Newscast, so, alright.